We'll roll, we'll start off first with Michelle Reese.
Present.
And Ms. Towns.
Present.
Ms. Mimi.
Present.
And John Kilman.
Present.
Dennis Gay, present. Jordan Noblyn.
Present.
And Sydney Sandy.
Present.
Let's see, next thing, we'll approve the minutes. Do we have, we have a motion to approve the minutes from our prior meeting? Make the motion to approve? We have a second. All in favor, right hand. It's approved. Okay, we'll start with public items. Poplin mixed use CZ 2018-0092, conditional zoning amendment. And we'll turn it over to Ms. Katie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board members. So this is as a request to rezone seven parcels. Collectively, they total approximately 155 acres in size. They, the, this also includes a mix of properties that are located within the town of Indian Trail and some that are also within unincorporated Union County. So accompanying this application is also an annexation request for some of those parcels. So that step will be, some of those steps have already taken place before town council, but the ultimate public hearing for that will line up at the same public hearing for the rezoning request. So the properties are currently zoned rural, single-family, for those that are in the town of Indian Trail and also, I believe it's R20 for unincorporated Union County. The proposed zoning is to rezone this as a planned unit development. And within that, there would be a general business district, which would be within the village overlay, single-family, high-density residential, which is what we call SF5, and also multifamily residential. The intent is to construct a mixed-use development, which would consist of commercial, a commercial area up along Unionville Indian Trail Road, single-family detached residential units, townhomes, and also a park. The applicant would be looking to take advantage of the new Monroe Expressway that recently opened. Here's a copy of the concept plan. You do have a copy that was provided in your packets. I recognize that this is a bit small, but it does show you again that it starts at Unionville Indian Trail Road and the main road would be Poplin Village Drive that goes down and ultimately connects to Rocky River Road. Let's see. Here are some architectural examples that the applicant has provided. You can see it would consist of a mix of stone and brick and masonry, masonry examples like that, and also some hardy plank siding, but no vinyl siding. So again, this is an example of the product. Here's a photo of the existing site. This is taken standing on Unionville Indian Trail Road with, with the new Monroe Expressway kind of behind you and off to the right. Here is looking east and west on Unionville Indian Trail Road. Of course, you can see the construction that's taking place. Here's a vicinity map, gives you an idea. The, the properties outlined in red are those associated with this request within the town of Indian Trail. And then this also shows you the proximity to the Monroe Expressway. I also want to point out, and I should have mentioned it earlier, of course, I could say we have properties that are in the town of Indian Trail, some that the applicant has requested be annexed and from unincorporated Union County. And there are two parcels down here that are located within the city of Monroe. The applicant is not talking about de-annexing from, not talking about de-annexing those parcels from the town of, the city of Monroe. I understand the applicant has had some conversations with, with the city to bring them up to speed on the project. Staff shared this plan with the city of Monroe, of course, because of how close it is to them. But I just want to point those out to you. You can see those in the concept plan when you look down at that section of the concept plan. And I just want to bring that to your attention and don't want to alarm you. Here's a copy of the zoning map. If there's no color, that means the parcel is in unincorporated Union County and those are the ones that have requested to be annexed into the town. The remaining parcels are, again, as you can see, green for rural, single-family. We do have one that is single-family, low-density residential. I've provided a copy of the Seacrest Shortcut Small Area Plan. This is where we typically provide a copy of the future land use map for the applicable section of the comprehensive plan. But this is the first project we have to kick off after the adoption of the Seacrest Shortcut Small Area Plan. Such a mouthful. But you can see that in the circled area is where the boundaries are for this property. Again, here's, well, here's Unionville Indian Trail Road. Here's the Monroe Expressway. The properties fall within here and this project is pretty consistent with that because if anything with this, with the lines, the dashed lines or hatched lines, represents mixed use. So up closest to the intersection is where the applicant is proposing to show commercial. Then it transitions back with some townhomes and then ultimately at the back with single-family detached homes. Regarding community meetings and engagement, the applicant did hold the required two meetings on November 26th. One, one meeting was held on-site and the following, the second meeting was held here at town hall. The applicant also held one voluntary meeting prior to the actual submission of the application and that was held here at town hall on August 13th. He also presented two times at town, during town council developer workshops. So want to point out that the applicant has gone a bit, a bit above and beyond the typical engagement process. Recommendation, okay. Staff and the applicant are still working to finalize the review of this concept plan. As you can imagine, this is a, this is a very large concept plan. You can, I won't, I don't want to go into all the detail that's in your staff report, but you can see again, the number of residential units that are provided and, and understand a bit of the, the scope of the project. So we're still working to refine that. So, and because of that, staff does recommend that this be approved with the contingency that the outstanding items be addressed before it goes to town council. We have spoken with the applicant about this. He's okay with this because none of us feel that these items are anything that are going to stop anything or, or be insurmountable. So that's our recommendation regarding that. Just want to point out to you that, of course, because of the location and proximity to Union County, we have been in, have been in communication with the Union County Planning Department staff. So they've been informed throughout the process. They were, they were informed because the applicant has been following the Seacrest-Shortcut Small Area Plan. So he's been, I could say, he was involved through that. And as a result of that, staff here, we were able to stay in communication and keep the Union County folks up to speed. Also want to point out that staff had a discussion with the applicant and we're discussing the possibility of possibly adding apartments. Possibly with retail on the bottom and up in the commercial section. This, this is not on the table right now. Just wanted to bring this up to you, that it's something that the applicant may be considering. The, the goal is to reach out to council and see if there may be support in that. So again, that's not on the table tonight. Certainly, we'd have to have an updated concept plan if that is, if that is the goal. Let's see. There's so much to cover, I want to make sure I covered it all. I do want to point out that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and also the Seacrest-Shortcut Small Area Plan. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and read the findings into the record. The proposed UDO amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan and the Seacrest-Shortcut Small Area Plan. Quality of life, goal number one, and Seacrest-Shortcut Small Area Plan, goal number four. The proposed request will give the opportunity to establish a unique identity in this area and start to bring the Seacrest-Shortcut Small Area Plan to fruition with residential and retail uses, as well as a community park. The provision of these multiple uses will enable the creation of a sense of place. Land use and housing, goal number one and two, and also Seacrest-Shortcut Small Area Plan, goal number one. The proposed project will promote compatibility of land uses between the residential neighborhood and retail uses. It will also provide multiple housing options. The rezoning request is, is reasonable and is in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of quality of life, as well as land use and housing. And so again, staff recommends approval of this with the contingency that outstanding items be addressed. I do want to point out, you have a copy in front of you of the draft ordinance. That ordinance is what gets recorded with the concept plan once it goes to town council. That is very much a draft. The applicant has just seen the draft. So don't get, don't get married to it because it needs to go through some changes. We need to work through those with the applicant to make sure he's comfortable. But that is the format of the document. You see, you're, you're going to see most of that material on the, on the final that goes to town council and that's not uncommon. It's actually pretty typical for us to tweak a little bit between planning board and town council. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And I also want to let you know that the applicant is here with a presentation as well. For the, when, and then the public hearing, of course. Or not public hearing, public comments.
Should we have anybody sign up for public comments?
Yes, Chair, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Always like to start off, just to let everybody know, we're, the planning board is, it consists of citizens in Indian Trail. We're all neighbors and we're all here for one reason, that's to make Indian Trail a better place. And we are a recommending board. We recommend to town council our feelings about these projects. And it will go to town council after. We make our recommendation, whether we would recommend it or not recommend it. And then town council makes the final decision. So if you are happy with what we recommend, then that's, that's great. But if you have, if you disagree with what we, what we think, then next step would be to go to the town council meeting, let them, the town council members know how you feel. We allow three minutes for public comment. We ask that you state your name and your address. And if you watch our little, new little box up here, it'll turn green when you can talk. It'll turn yellow when you have 30 seconds left. And then turns red and I think probably will buzz when your time is up. So we'll call our, we have one, one comment tonight. It would be Craig Lemon. Is that correct?
Yeah.
If you'd like to come up, you get three minutes.
If I'm colorblind, we might be in trouble.
Okay. This one is.
I got it. We're on 3910 North Rocky River. And our concern would be water runoff on our business. The, the first hurricane, we had a lot of flooding. And so that would be our main concern. We have a greenhouse, we have a greenhouse business there. About 25 acres of land there. The creek runs right by us. I don't know if, you know, cleaning up the creek a little better or, or what would help. But it probably, we had some, and, and part of it's in the flood plain, the 500-year flood plain. And, but we did have, you know, retail costs of about a hundred and some thousand dollars washed down the creek and with that. So that, and with the, the highway or the toll road coming in, you know, we were getting a lot of red water coming down on parts of it. And I know that DOT has done a lot trying to do their thing. But that would just be a concern. I think it's a great project, but we'd like to be involved a little bit on the water runoff if we could. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That's all of our comments for the night. And okay, at this time, I'll close public comment. At this time, are we going to hear, we'll hear what, from the applicant?
Yes.
My name is Paul Schreiber. I'm with MT Land. We are the ones proposing the project. Would like to start by just saying thank you for taking the time to hear about the project. Going to try to go through this. There's a lot of slides. There's a lot of information. Katie had a lot of information. Some of it will be duplicated, some of it will be new. But hopefully, I can answer a lot of your questions before they even come up. So, but I'll try to go through it quickly. Again, we are MT Land. We've been in the Charlotte area for 30-plus years, locally owned and operated. Charles Myers is the principal owner. He's a Charlotte native. He has owned Myers Park Properties, Myers Park Mortgage. He's just been here for quite some time. MT Land is currently working on eight projects in Charlotte and Charleston, which represents over 9,000 new home sites. And as a team, we've designed or built over 10,000 home sites. Our Joe Harris is our engineer, 20 years in the industry. They've worked with Indian Trail previously. So we've had a great relationship with Rox and Katie. And Kim Lee Horn is our traffic engineer, clients across the country. Again, have worked with Rox and Katie previously. So they are the ones who did the traffic study, which is complete and approved by both Indian Trail and NC DOT. You know, obviously, on October 15th, the Seacrest-Shortcut Plan was fully adopted. We spent probably a year and a half working on this plan, designing specifically towards meeting the goals and objectives and design criteria of the Small Area Plan. So a lot of information went into this. We redesigned the site, what do you say, Rox, about seven times with staff approval and input and, you know, even the town manager having say in how things are laid out, even to the finest detail of where the amenity center would be located. So there really has been a lot of time and effort put into meeting the goals of the Small Area Plan. Katie has shown you this before. I'll go into a little bit more detail on each section, just so you can get a better idea and handle of what this really looks like. As Katie said, we had a voluntary meeting on August 13th. We had about 20 or so neighbors in attendance. And the typical questions were asked, you know, timing of development, phasing, access points, things of that nature. So we were able to address a lot of the concerns for people at that meeting, which resulted in the meetings on the 26th where we only had one person or two people show up to the first meeting and three people show up to the second meeting. So I think we did a great job with the voluntary meeting, answering a lot of people's questions and concerns. And with the Small Area Plan having had so much attention, I think a lot of people knew something along these lines was going to be coming. So there wasn't a lot of questions for people to ask. This is the diagram from the traffic study that was done, showing the various intersections. And the next couple of slides specifically call out what those improvements are. And I understand Katie gave everybody a copy of this presentation. So you have it in detail, so you don't have to worry too much about trying to look specifically at this. But obviously, at each intersection that, or everywhere we create a new intersection, there'll be improvements made, as well as at Unionville Indian Trail Road and North Rocky River and down at Seacrest-Shortcut Road and Unionville Indian Trail Road as well. There'll be some improvements as warranted. And like I said, each of those is specifically spelled out here as to what that is. But I could spend 40 minutes just talking about this. So I'll, I'll just kind of breeze through this a little bit. You can go into detail if, if you have specific questions. We can come back to that. Right now, one of the commercial developers that we're speaking with, we don't, we mainly focus on the residential side. We bring in commercial partners. Arista Development, who did the Hansfield project down by Sun Valley, sorry. They're very tight in with Publix and they would love to bring a Publix to this location as well. So they would be the, the anchor on here. Based on the Small Area Plan, the goal is to have something similar to an Ayersley type of community. You know, tree-lined, Main Boulevard, architectural restrictions, things of that nature. And to be honest with, Katie mentioned the apartments. That was something new that was actually asked of us today. Katie and Rox and I met this morning to talk about the project. And, you know, the, the idea of, you know, maybe bringing in some live work and some, you know, apartments like the Ayersley was just kind of brought up. So that's why we don't have too much information to talk about at this point with that. It's, it's really a relatively new idea. So we're going to examine that and if it makes sense, we're going to incorporate it. If we can get, you know, council's blessing on it, obviously, they're the ultimate decision makers on it. But we're open to the concept of adding it in if it will enhance the project. The other side of Poplin Village Drive is again, office, retail, maybe a higher-end gas station, sit-down restaurants, maybe a drive-through restaurant like a Zaxby's or a Chick-fil-A, something a little bit nicer to go along with supplementing what we're trying to do with the residential. I do want to point out that the commercial centers have walking trails throughout the neighborhood so that they'll provide easy access from anywhere in the neighborhood for people to walk up to the retail centers, not have to be driving up there to get there, really creating a pedestrian-friendly community. One of the things I think Katie didn't even mention was the possibility of a little park for Indian Trail as well. We've reserved roughly about four acres upfront where it could be incorporated into the commercial and create some synergies between the two. So hopefully, we can continue to examine that idea. And if it works for Indian Trail, great, you know, it could be a community park. If not, it would just resort, revert back to just common open space that would be maintained by the HOA. The townhome section would be a mix of front-load and rear-load product to kind of create some diversity and different types of streetscapes so that you're not looking at the same thing over and over. Lots of open space, pocket parks. And again, you can kind of see the, the walking trails throughout to make ease of access throughout the neighborhood. This just gives you some idea of what the elevations would look like. Lots of different architectural styles and features to help create that streetscape that we're looking for. Again, the building materials, hardy board, stone or brick exteriors, vinyl for trims and doors and things of that nature. For this particular product, it would be a rear-load garage. We have not had the opportunity yet to incorporate the front-load product, what that would look like. That was a change that was made just a short time ago. We originally thought this was going to be all rear-load, but after consideration with engineering and such, we were asked to make a mix of products. So you'd have similar type of building materials and things of that nature, but just with a one-car garage, front-load. This kind of gives you an idea of what the interiors would look like. Typically, a three-bedroom, two-bath, one-car garage, really nice interiors, probably 1,500 to 1,800 square feet. So a good size, but not, you know, too big. The single-family detached is composed of 50-foot and 60-foot lots. Again, walking trails throughout. You can see here that the amenity center is located in between the towns and the single-family. So it provides easy access for both product lines. And Katie has shown you this earlier. So just the, again, the, the types of architecture, Eastwood Homes, in particular, this is their product. They're very much interested in being part of this community. Really nice insides and outsides, nice living areas, both in and out. So be a quality product for Indian Trail, something that you could be proud of. The amenity center, again, right in the middle of the project, with frontage on Poplin Village Drive. So highly visible, but the access would actually come in the back. So it makes it easier, you know, you're not bogging down traffic on Poplin Village Drive with people, you know, coming in and out. They have to hit the side roads and get back in there. We do have about a million dollars budgeted for the amenity center. Would be a clubhouse with an 1,800-square-foot meeting room, 4,500-square-foot pool with two kids' areas, a multi-purpose court, probably basketball, tennis, volleyball, playground, gazebo, water slides, you know, the kids' areas. So really, a high-end amenity center. The single-family and the townhomes would be, you know, hardy board, brick and stone, vinyl only for accents and trims. Prices in the low-to-mid twos for the townhomes. The smaller single-family would be from 265. The larger homes would be from the low 300s. Pedestrian-friendly, walking trails throughout the community, easy access to both the amenities and the retail center. Lots of open space, lots of buffers along the bypass. You know, typically, we're required to have a 25-foot buffer area and we have at least a 75-foot buffer area, heavily treed to reduce noise. We only have a small section of the townhomes that actually back up to the bypass. Most of the homes have Poplin Village Drive between them and the bypass. So you have the buffer and a road before you even get to your first sets of houses. So we really spent a lot of time taking that into consideration when we were laying the site out. And, you know, we have a website that has all this information on it. And, you know, we set this up for neighbors, be able to email us directly to be able to ask and answer questions easily for them. Unfortunately, we didn't have anybody email us, but I guess that's a good thing. Nobody was too worried about what we were proposing. So that all went well. And that's about it for the presentation. So hopefully, I was able to answer a lot of questions for you. But I'm happy to answer any that I missed.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to the board for any questions. Jordan?
First of all, I want to commend you guys for doing a great job on this concept plan, your consultants as well, and working with planning. That helps make our job a lot easier, you know, when you come before and things are firmly vetted out. So again, thank you for that.
Thank you.
What, what thoughts do you guys have as far as phasing for this? How many phases do you see this being?
Probably three phases with a little of each going all at one time. We're going to have to do a pump station on-site, which would be, you know, at the bottom down by the flood plain. Obviously, everything flows that way. So we would most likely bring Poplin Village Drive all the way through and then do small phases of each product type off of Poplin Village Drive. So there'd be a little bit of everything going at once, but it would ultimately be built out probably in three phases. One of the nice things too, that I want to point out with the phasing is that the commercial, because of where we're located, by the bypass and things of that nature, my commercial development partner doesn't think, or is not dependent upon us being behind them with houses coming online before, you know, they bring in the Publix and some of the other retail. With the bypass being located where it is and the other larger neighborhoods, Bonterra, Annandale, Fieldstone, they feel like they'll be able to start pretty quickly on the commercial side of it as well. So when I say there's going to be a little bit of everything going at once, there will be a little bit of everything. But it's, it's definitely to everybody's benefit, which will help us build through this quickly, quicker as well. So we're not out here for 10 years. We'll probably, with four product lines, I think our build-out was between four and five years for everything.
And that was going to be my next question, was just what the complete build-out date is as far as like, I know if you guys go to town council and they do approve it, you know, you've got six to eight months of construction documents before you're even breaking ground.
Absolutely.
So four, four to five years.
Yeah, if we're lucky, we'd start construction maybe late in 2019. So figure houses in 2020, build out by 2024-ish. Commercial may take a little bit longer, but, you know, a lot of the commercial, like the Publix, would come in pretty quickly. And once the Publix comes in, a lot of people, and I've already had a lot of other commercial developers reaching out to me when we had the work session and there was the article in the paper. Some people started reaching out to me wanting to know, hey, how do I get involved? So it may not take as long for the commercial to come in as I, as I had originally anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the four-acre park, I mean, what, what are you going to be doing with that? Are you going, you just donating that to the town or you going, or the Home More Association? Or is it, you going to put amenities in that park area or what? What's your plan here?
We'll have some walking trails in that park area. But as far as the specific plan, Parks and Rec has not decided what they want to put in there. I think what is typical is we would give the town five years to decide whether they wanted it or not. And whatever the town wanted to put in, they would put in. If it reverted back to the HOA, by that time, us as the developer would probably be out of the picture. by that time, us as the developer would probably be out of the picture, so it would fall back on the HOA to decide what they wanted to do, but I don't see it being a big amenity center or anything like that, it would be more of a, an open park, maybe like a dog park or something like that.
My concern was that if you don't put anything in there, it's just going to be a liability to the town, somebody's got to keep it clean, keep, uh,
We, yeah, we would main, own and maintain it until the town decided if they wanted it or not. So, yeah, we, initially, it would serve as just a common open space park area, more open space, because it's, right now, it's just a farm, so it's wide open field right now. But we would have the walking trails in there and create a space that could be developed later if the town decides they want to put something specific in there.
I mean, we got a park right down the road from you down there, I think Crooked Creek Park, is that correct?
Yeah.
And so you could look at that and see what, you know, what you might want to put in there, so that was my concern. My, my concern was it'd be, be a liability to the town, so. And anyway, I'll let you and staff work that out. My next question, that triangular piece behind, right below the park there, that's, that's not even part of your subdivision, part of your development?
Let me, let me.
There's a little triangular piece right down there that's not, uh, how much land is that? You see what I'm talking about?
The little, hang on, let me, I think I know what you're talking about.
It's right there, whoa, whoa.
The pocket park where it's called, where it says parking po, parking park, oh, along the bypass there?
Along the bypass. How large of, you can see part of it from there, say.
Yeah, that's not our property, that little triangle, that's not our property.
How much land is involved there?
I would say that's probably only about an acre of land, maybe.
Is that a buildable lot, rocks, or Katie?
Numbered, where it's twenty-two.
Where it says twenty-two there.
Certainly wouldn't be by the time this project came online as far as being able to access it.
Well, my next question, how can they access it? And if it's a buildable lot, what if somebody wants to build there? And, and then if it's non-conforming, we need to be doing something with that, so.
No, I think that's something we need to look into further in terms of how access is preserved into the parcel.
Yeah, okay. Okay. My next question is the, I see you got some traffic signals at each end, Poplin Road and and Rocky River Road. And, and, and my concern is, and then got several intersections in the, within the development, and the sheriff's department mentioned something about putting speed bumps in. Have you thought about putting roundabouts, that's what they're doing now, is putting roundabouts instead of traffic signals to not impede the flow, just keep it constant, flow the constant.
I think the amount of flow and our traffic engineer would be able to speak to it probably better, but the amount of flow through Poplin, specifically Poplin and Unionville, Indian Trail Road, is greater than what a roundabout could handle, so.
Greater than what a roundabout can handle?
Because we're, we actually have to put in two left turn lanes on Poplin Village out onto Unionville Indian Trail Road. So you'd, you actually have three lanes coming out of Poplin Village Drive, so you wouldn't be able to do the roundabout there. And DOT specific, and DOT specifically is the ones who, with their traffic warrants, are the ones who wanted a traffic light there. Typically, they like to have the roundabouts because they're lower cost for them.
And less, no maintenance, okay.
Less maintenance, less cost, but this particular intersection, there's just too much volume to do a roundabout there.
Okay, well, I see one in Williamson with dual lanes, I mean, I'm just comparing it, okay. My next question, if part of this land is in Union County, part of it's in Indian Trail, part of it's in the city of Monroe, is that something that can be done as far as de-annexing from Monroe and going into Indian Trail?
We're not de-annexing, there's ten acres in Monroe, we're not de-annexing that part. That, that's not part of this request, that little ten acre tract is not impacted by y'all's decisions here. If I do anything on those ten acres, I have to do it through Indian Trail, or through Monroe.
Okay, my, my next concern is the police protection, the garbage and taxes, the police protection is the big thing because we got subdivisions within this county, within Indian Trail now, that are doughnut holes that if they call nine one one, they got to wait for the county to show up, not the Indian Trail Police or Sheriff's Office, and then areas that the city of Monroe has to come and, and within our town limit, or close to our town limits and, and police protection, I mean, they'd be sitting there not knowing who to call, so it could be, so.
It'll be just Indian Trail.
Just be, all be Indian Trail.
Yeah, and, you know, there, maybe in the ten acres, there might be a few houses there that would be Monroe, but everything else is Indian Trail. We're requesting to go from the unincorporated Union County into Indian Trail.
So you're just dealing with the unincorporated and existing Indian Trail?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, last question. I know you mentioned something about the north barrier around the, plus the apartments, and I didn't know what you, if you plan to put any kind of barrier wall. I know seventy-five feet sounds like a lot, but, but you get those trucks going out there and I know it's not going now as well as it will, it will.
We looked at doing a barrier wall, it was over three million dollars to do a barrier wall.
I understand it's expensive, but.
We, we couldn't do it.
Well, what about some planting?
Oh, yeah, we're going to, yeah, we got, we got a seventy-five foot wide planting buffer that will, large trees and shrubs and all kinds of things to help reduce that, that noise as much as possible.
Okay, I think that's all I found, good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do, thank you, I mean, this is a great project, I mean, this sounds, like I, as you were talking and describing, I'm like, this is so good being that the, it's so hard for residents on that side to come across to, you know, we have all, I live in the Sun Valley area, so we have all the shops and all the stores and everything, so it gives them an opportunity to have something in that area without dealing with, with the value, to, to grease the volume in, in Sun Valley area.
Sure.
I work in a school system, so you know, I'm going to ask questions about the schools, so I wanted to know, what, I, I read the concerns about it, like what, how do you guys plan on addressing that?
Well, we did do the study, and as far as, there's only so much we can do. Obviously, Union County continues to grow rapidly, more schools are needed. But as far as, there's very little that we personally, as, as the developers can do with the school and influencing on, you know, school boundary lines and when new schools get built and things of that nature. But, you know, obviously, the, the tax dollars and things of that nature with this type of development with the commercial, it does help add revenue to the system to be able to improve, you know, existing schools and add on, add on. But Union County, absolutely, every, and this is a question I get in every community meeting and every, every municipality, every county is struggling with the growth of the Charlotte area. UNC Charlotte did a study, they're expecting five hundred thousand people to move to the Charlotte and surrounding area over the next ten years. Every school system is behind on what they need. And unfortunately, there's only so much we as the developers can do. It's a major issue for everybody, but, you know, we, we had the study done, we know there is some capacity issues, but again, I'm not sure how much we can do to alleviate that problem. It, it's just a reality that all of Charlotte is, is facing and we all have to plan ahead, I guess, is the best way to, to look at it, but that's as far as we've taken it with the study at this point.
Have you worked, you've worked, have you worked with Union County Public Schools? Have you spoke, I mean, other than your concerns, have you worked with them to come up with any ideas of what they can do and what you guys can do together to help, because they would eventually need another school, I mean, between Sun Valley and Porter Ridge, the two major schools in Indian Trail are, are over flooded.
Sure.
What, I was just curious, I mean, I know you can't do anything or answer that, answer that this evening, but.
Yeah.
Just a thought that as you guys are building, just, because parents will be concerned.
Sure.
You know what I mean, because if they want to buy property, and then the school starts to, you know, lose its points and its values, and that could affect.
Sure.
Real estate and businesses, so we want to make sure we, we, in building, we want to make sure we keep the integrity of our, you know, schools and towns that we're working together so we can continue to encourage the rapid growth in this area.
Absolutely, and, you know, like I said, it's a concern everywhere I go. We try to do as much as we can, you know, unfortunately, with a project this size, it's not big enough for us to donate land to, you know, put a new school on, on site. The, so the, you know, we're very limited in what we can do. But we do recognize, you know, we've got, we've got several projects, I've got one project that's fifteen hundred acres. We're donating seventy-five acres for them to put a middle and elementary school on. So it is something that, when possible, we do address because we understand the concerns. But unfortunately, sometimes we're just, we're just limited in what we can do. We've done the study, we know it's getting tight. Fortunately, with this type of project, it gives the school board, you know, five to seven years, you know, depending on when engineering plans and things like that get approved, to address the situation and to plan ahead. Because they are going to need a new school, it's just reality. But as far as being able to pressure them into doing so and, and we're just a small developer and we can, we can only do so much.
Yeah, school board, they work slower, they work, they work after the fact.
Right, well, and it's like, it's like the roads too, and obviously, everybody has concern about traffic and things like that. You know, the bypass coming in is, is fantastic, it's going to alleviate a lot of traffic concerns. But DOT does not, they're not proactive, they're reactive, and it's usually, you know, you need the houses and things of that nature to come in before DOT will actually start improving the road system and, and doing those types of things, so. It's a little bit unfortunate, but one of the nice things is with a neighborhood like this, and it's what I found, we, we typically do more of the higher end neighborhoods. It's a higher price point, the families come in, they spend a little more time at the PTA meetings and the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so to speak, so doing these types of communities helps. There is some initial impact on schools and roads, but these type of people are very involved with the school system, so again, they'll be making noise and hopefully.
Well, I hope so.
Making people react a little quicker than they tend to, but we try to do as much as we can, but sometimes we are limited.
Okay, I understand, and one more quick question, the resident that had addressed the running, the water runoff, is something that you guys plan on addressing to make sure?
Yeah, and, you know, obviously, engineering requires us to put in stormwater retention ponds and things of that nature, and I actually gave him my card so I can find out exactly where he is and, you know, some of the issues, but like he was saying, some of his property's in that five hundred year floodplain. And, you know, there's only so much we can do when we get those types of storms, the hurricanes come through, it doesn't matter what your stormwater retention looks like.
Exactly, has something to do, yeah, right about that.
But we do, you know, we tend to spend a little bit more time and effort on our BMPs, we tend to, like the BMP that'll be at the park. We tend, we plan to make that more of a water feature versus just a, a retention pond sitting there that just gets filled up every now and then. We plan to try to make that a, a wet basin, so you got a fountain and things like that in there, so that it incorporates, it's not just sitting there. It's more of a feature than a nuisance.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Ms. Townes?
Yeah, I have just a small, teeny question. The pool, is it an indoor pool or an outdoor pool?
Outdoor pool, outdoor amenity center, just for the neighbors.
Is it enclosed or how were you building that?
You have fencing and things like that to try to keep people out, so to speak, but it's a requirement to have certain restrictive access.
Yes, because I was involved with the HOA Association and one of the major complaints that homeowners had was the pool. And the fact that people could get in and use their pool.
Right.
So are you going to, in your construction, put some sort of blockage where only homeowners can use it? And no little child will be able to get in there and possibly fall into the pool?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's specific fencing requirements for pools, especially community pools. So that type of situation would be addressed where you're not going to have people just wandering in or falling into the pool. Anybody who's there illegally is making an effort to be there, you know, hopping fences and things of that nature, but typically, our amenity centers have electronic gate codes and things of that nature, higher end.
Oh, you're, you're going to put in the electronic?
Yeah, it's all part of the package as it goes in, yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, she asked my question about the schools, so, but I noticed on all your planning information that you have, and I live in Bonterra, I have a fifth grader that attends Poplin Elementary, and I noticed you're using our little patriot there.
We always like to incorporate, and obviously, we, we'd have to go a little further maybe to look at incorporating that into actual signage and stuff, but we like to incorporate neighborhoods as much as possible.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't really have a question, just, I've lived there for a long time and there's been a sign there ever since I moved to Indian Trail over a decade ago that something's coming. So, thank you, and I do hope we get a Publix on that side of town, number one. Number two, as a parent and as a citizen, and, you know, I have a child that goes to Poplin, I would love to see the Poplin Village project reach out specifically to Poplin and do something specifically for Poplin, especially since you have our little patriot guy on your front page.
Yep.
That's all.
Yep.
I have a question, and this is more about, I guess, codes, but, and I know this one of the cars inside the garage and been a lot of publicity lately about carbon monoxide and now with the push button cars, push button start, people forgetting to cut their cars off. Are there, are there codes now where they're putting carbon dioxide?
Detectors, I don't think that has gotten that far yet on a building code requirement.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I got one more question, and you touched on the one car garage. How much parking off street will you have and for how many cars, because I don't know, very many households has got one car? And, and on-street parking, I mean, sometimes the fire trucks have difficulty getting them around in our, in the town of Indian Trail, and if just something on news just a few weeks ago about hundred, I mean, they showed on-street parking and, and, and it had the road literally completely blocked for fire trucks.
Well, with the, we've got a bunch of parking at the town home area because that is a one car garage, but they'll also have, I think it's spaces available for two spaces in their driveway, so one car in the garage, two cars in the driveway, and then we have one and a half spaces additional per unit, is that the, one point five or one point two five? One point two five spaces additional off-site for the additional parking and for guests and things of that nature.
Okay, and backing up on the roundabouts, I know you just, you mentioned the each end, but, I mean, the sheriff had mentioned about putting speed bumps and everything else in there, what about some of those intersections inside the development, is that something that you would consider?
Yeah, we'll look at it, you know, there'll be stop signs and things interior as well. A lot of times too, we'll, we'll need to talk to streets and maintenance, the police like the speed bumps, but maintenance doesn't like the speed bumps from a maintenance standpoint. So what, and what we also tried to do, like Poplin Village Drive, obviously, we don't have any driveways on Poplin Village Drive, so you don't have cars coming in and out on Poplin Village, but we also have a, it's a divided median with a lot of curves, so that slows people down. So you don't need necessarily the speed bumps, and typically, most of our other street sections are short runs, so people can't really get a bunch of speed going. So we were very diligent in the way the site was laid out to address a lot of those concerns.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
How wide are, are the streets?
Back to back on the curb and gutter on, on the little side streets, I think is twenty-four feet. And on the Poplin, Poplin Village Drive, which is more of a thoroughfare type road, the roads are a little bit wider, but we also have that median in there, but the travel lanes are, are fourteen feet instead of twelve feet in each direction. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, this time, I guess we need to see if we have a recommendation.
Go ahead, Joel. I might not read it into the record correctly, so I recommend, help me out.
Assuming you're looking, if you're looking to recommend-
I recommend it, yes, so, yes, help me out.
If you're looking to recommend approval, you could recommend approval of the request with the contingency that outstanding items be addressed.
Okay.
And also that the, uh, what, yes, thank you, findings of fact be also recommended up to town council.
Okay, so whatever she says. I recommend that the findings are that the consistency findings are, I recommend it, yeah, just, I recommend.
We recommend approval contingent on outstanding items.
Okay, okay, I recommend, consist, that I make recommendations consistent with the comprehension plan and C-Crest shortcut, you know, cut SAP, request, do I need to read the second part too? Request promote goal, no, I don't need to read all that.
You can just say consistent with the findings.
I want to stay consistent with the findings.
And also that this be contingent on addressing outstanding items.
And it be, that it will be contingent on outstanding items. Addressing the outstanding items.
Good job.
Sorry.
It's a lot, thank you.
You have to put that in writing for us, because this is not the same.
Do we have a second? All second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Ms. Towns, are you voting?
But, yes. She was supposed to leave this, and she's going to pass it on.
I voted, I voted, yes, okay, it's unanimous.
Unanimous to approve.
Excuse me.
Unanimous to approve.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Thank you all.
Now, we go to other business.
All right.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for doing business in Indian Trail.
Samantha, Samantha's wasn't reading that, oh, threw me under the bus.
That's not on the agenda. My getting abused is not on the agenda.
I did this, I don't know.
It's the way they want you to leave it, it's not it's not written the same way.
All right.
So last month, we discussed the twenty-eighteen, nineteen playing board meeting calendar, and shared the dates with you that are in your packet this evening. At, at that meeting, last month's meeting, we also discussed rescheduling the, or not rescheduling, changing the meeting time for next year to start our meetings at six o'clock versus six-thirty at present. Like, the board was unanimous in supporting a six o'clock start time to kind of help us just go ahead and get a jump on our cases and give us just that much more time to address the business at hand, or for that matter, get home earlier. So we have prepared the updated calendar for you, it's in your packet, we just like you to approve it so we can incorporate it into your materials and post it publicly.
Do we have motion to accept the new calendar in time? If we have a second, if we have a second, is, everybody raise your hand in favor? It's unanimous, so it is approved. One thing I think they probably should mention at this time too, we had some bad news about one of our board members, Art Spur, apparently went into the hospital with difficulties, and he's found out that he has stage four cancer, and according to Crystal, I believe, he's, he kind of verbally over the phone resigned from the board. So we, let's keep him in our thoughts and prayers, and, you know, hopefully, he, he doesn't have a hard journey in front of him, but, you know, it doesn't sound real good right now from what little bit we know. So, and I think he's in Presbyterian downtown, yeah, so anybody has some time, let go visit him, I think he probably would appreciate company at this time. Another question, I noticed, and I'm not sure if everybody was here, when we went over the revision of the board, all the boards and the reduction in the, the members of the board, so I imagine at this time, and get your advice, we just would leave that, that seat open and use alternates until, until they vote again in June.
That's correct, the, so just as a means of background, just in case anyone hadn't heard the, the upcoming program for our boards and committees. So the council had, over the past couple of months, have been kind of examining the composition of the boards and committees, looking to just make sure that the boards and committees are operating as efficiently as possible, as well as, you know, that we have the right boards and committees supporting the goals that are needed for, at the request of the town council. So with that, they've, I believe, eliminated a couple of committees that just, you know, didn't feel were needed any longer, and then with specifically, as it relates to the planning board, they have decided to go with a smaller membership roster. So at present, we have a seven-member planning board with three alternates. And so, starting, and I believe it's in, it'd be July of next year, we'll go down to five permanent members and then one alternate. And so, right now, so how, but, but again, those changes wouldn't take effect until the new, you know, the next fiscal year, ultimately, July one, twenty nineteen. So for how that relates to us, at present, we have alternate seat number three, I believe, that's vacant, let's see, just won't be filled. So if there is opportunities, if there are occurrences where, you know, people step off the board or terms expire, we'll probably let those, you know, we'll not refill those seats through the course of this, of the, between now and July first, and then the council will make whatever decisions they need to, to achieve the five plus one at that time. With Mr. Spur's seat, which I believe Mr. Spur is a permanent member, you know, they, with that seat, I think there would be an opportunity, at least during this, you know, this period, to potentially elevate, you know, an alternate to a full-time for that period. Let me check with our town clerk with, for that, but I believe that could be an opportunity, and we can follow up before the next meeting. But that would be certainly a possibility, I mean, we're not increasing the number, we're just rearranging seats. So there'd be two, potentially two vacant alternates.
But we'll drop from seven to five come July, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, I mean, should we put somebody in that or just use alternates, because we're going to eliminate two members?
Right, so tracing with Mr. Spurs, so Mr. Spurs' seat is, when you, when you move someone to a permanent seat, you in essence take over their term.
Right.
And so, whether they're, they're brought in from the inside or the outside.
Correct.
And so I'm looking at Mr. Spurs' tenure, and, and his seat expires on June thirtieth. So he, you know, so he was set to expire this year, that's, or his seat was set to expire this year regardless. And so, someone that would be moved into that seat would be, you know, that they would then take on that seat, and then that term would expire at the same time as Mr. Spurs would have. And so that's something we would need to, you know, look into a little closer, I'm looking at the two alternates, Mr. Litch and Ms. Reese, whose, both their terms expire in twenty-twenty, so again, there's some nuances, you know, we could either move someone to a permanent seat, or we can do like a rotating alternate, you know, that, in, in some cases, you know, we may have a regular member that's out sick too, so there'd be both alternates would be able to be voting participants, so we seem to kind of weigh those, you know, those options, and we can just get back to it at the next meeting and what we think is the best, the best one to move forward with.
Now, I may be confused, but I thought that the way they changed it, we were no longer going to have three-year terms, that they, didn't they decide that they're going, like, every year, they'll, they'll vote on who's going to continue on the board?
I'm not familiar with the terms changing, they may have, and I'm just not familiar, but, but again, let's say they did, that did occur, those changes wouldn't take effect until July one. So again, we're going to operate under our current structure and until that point, I can find out, again, I'm not familiar with that change.
Yeah, that's something we need to clarify, because I remember hearing something about that, so I don't know if they decided to do it yearly or, or what they decided to do.
I'd be happy to research that, I mean, that's a quick phone call, so, I mean, I could certainly find out about that.
Okay, okay.
But so what we'll do is for the next meeting, and really even beforehand, if we can just, if it could be addressed through an email, what would our, you know, in advance, how best to accommodate, you know, Mr. Spur's vacancy? Is it to elevate someone, an alternate into that position, or simply, you know, hey, let's just do a rotation of the alternates, of the two alternates, and, and just handle it that way, which, you know, that may be the simplest way to do it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one thing about the, if you're going to elevate somebody up, I mean, could we elevate the most senior alternate to that position if that comes about? I mean, all due respect to our other alternates, but I'm thinking that the most senior alternate would be the, the most likely one to be moved forward, so.
I think, I mean, my, we have to about, it's whoever shows interest in coming to the meetings to take, as far as a recommendation, take a look at who's been coming to the meetings, who's been dependable, that we can, we can depend on, and then move that person into, if we're going to move somebody into the, the job, base it on attendance.
And again, keep in mind, if, if you move someone into a permanent seat, that's a council action, that's not a board, necessarily a board action. You know, if we take, where, versus, you know, like a rotational, yeah, that's, that's something that, I'm not sure if it would require council action or not, like, I can't say for certain, elevating someone into a, from an alternate to a permanent seat would, would, would be a board, I'm sorry, would be a council action.
Okay, so we're better off just alternating alternates?
Again, we have two options, I think there, but there's pros and cons to both options. To be, I mean, my knee-jerk reaction is the more I think about it, I kind of like the rotation idea. But let us kind of research that a little bit further, you know, because it's a very recent change with council regarding the composition of the board, obviously, Mr. Spur's departure from the board was unexpected, and so we, let us just kind of, you know, talk, get our, you know, minds together, come up with what the options are, what our recommendation is, and how we affect that. But obviously, we want to make sure that we have the most participation possible amongst our, our permanent and alternate members, and so, you know, that'll be driving how we, you know, how we encourage participation, is, we'll be driving that recommendation.
Right, okay. Okay, any other business?
One, one other thing, I know we're all going to miss Mr. Spur, and I've known him for a number of years myself, and actually encouraged him to be a part of this planning board, so if, if we get his phone number passed, sent out to our board members, it'd be great if y'all gave him a phone call and, and give him some words of encouragement, I mean, he's been very dedicated to this board for a number of years, so.
Yeah, we did, we all sent him a Get Well card, was that last month?
Last meeting, yes.
Yeah, last meeting, so we have sent him a card. So, but if anybody, if, if you has phone number, if you'd like to give it out, and.
If, if you have this, the membership roster here, which I think all of you do,
Right.
His, his number is listed here, but again, I believe that's his home phone number, if he's in the hospital, he won't be getting necessarily.
It's a cell number.
Is it, okay.
Cell number, mm-hmm.
No, thank you, Crystal.
And we got his address also, is that correct?
Yes, it is on that list.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other business?
In terms of the, the planning report, we don't have anything, I don't have anything terribly specific or pressing to, to share other than, I thought tonight's meeting was, was a great discussion, I thought there's a lot of good questions from all the members. Obviously, a very big project, complex project, you know, involving, you know, really three jurisdictions and a small, you know, incorporated in with a small area plan. I thought that, you know, the feedback was good regarding concerns, or just, you know, just, you know, concerns about the public schools and, you know, keeping our eye on that ball, I mean, I think in terms of words of encouragement, it's certainly limited capacity that, you know, in North Carolina at least, of what, you know, developers can do for, with a project like this to help, you know, boost the schools, but I think one way, and Paul mentioned this, was, you know, the tax base, and, you know, knowing that there's going to be a substantial amount of commercial development that's going to be coming in, I think is, you know, is important to recognize that that's going to really bring in a lot of tax base, and quite frankly, even provide some jobs for some of the students, you know, in the immediate area. Also, the, you know, the amount, and it's, this bears out with the, the school impact assessment, that, the fair amount of the, of the dwelling units in this project are townhomes, and, you know, generally speaking, you know, you do see a lower student count in townhome developments, not a zero, but a lower count than you would in traditional neighborhoods. So also in terms of, you know, kind of just balancing, you know, or just, you know, being concerned about these impacts, understand that there are some factors that are certainly in the project's favor, and is, is making contribution to resolve that. I mean, I think, other good comments I heard, you know, with Mr. Sandy and the isolated, you know, parcel, I think it's probably landlocked today, even with the expressway, you know, Katie and I were just looking at that plan, and, and what we just simply do, there's a public road right next to it, and the developer would just extend a driveway to it, you know, and so, to make sure there's some, you know, minimum amount of access. And quite frankly, we'll talk offline, but maybe, you know, we can't force, well, you know, we'll see if it's possible even to incorporate into the project, you know, and, you know, obviously, through negotiations with the private, with the owners. But otherwise, I mean, again, I thought there was really, really good feedback, so I thought it was a great discussion, big project, and it certainly compliments to the developer, though he, he, they certainly went out of their way to work with the public and the neighbors early on, even before they submit the application, and so I think, you know, certainly compliments to them as well for the efforts they did. Other than that, I was, I was informed earlier this week that Christmas is actually next week, and it's not two weeks away, like I thought in my head. And so.
Amen, I've been there too.
Yeah, and so I want to wish everyone, just for me personally, you know, and Katie as well, a Merry Christmas, and, and hope everyone's, has a safe holiday, and gets to spend time with some friends and family, and certainly, if we can ever be a resource to anyone, just, you know, please pick up the phone, let us know how we can help you, but, thank you. Oh, and I, there's a hand raising, raised, Ms. Towns?
One of the things that I think that we should keep in mind with the way, you know, the climate is going, with floods and hurricanes, disasters and fires, people are migrating all over the country, here or there and everywhere. So I think if we think that, you know, certain areas are going to remain, you know, little cubby holes, et cetera, developers will be looking to buy those up because people are really moving all over the country. And I don't think that the dream house that we used to have with maybe five acres, et cetera, you know, it will all come to closure at some point. Yeah, because people are on the move. And, yeah, the younger people, you know, having big families, they do.
Also, just some closing thoughts, you know, special thanks to Crystal for all of her help in kind of keeping us on that straight and narrow path.
Thank you, Crystal.
And good job with our packets, and.
I'd like to recognize Crystal's mother here, too.
Thank you.
Okay, any other business? Have a motion to adjourn?
Same move.
Well, let's have a second.
Second.
All in favor, right hand?
Stand up.
And it is approved, okay.